All right, good morning, everyone. This is the two color order of April 30th in Preston County Commissioner. All right, good morning, everyone. This is my team caller for the April 30th. My first commission here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show the great commissioner of our mission, Mr. Tom Stenner. We need a public that has already scheduled the. So then you show them your heads, but no. All right. This time brings down our first. Mountain Heart Community Services Proclamation for the 60th Anniversary of Community Action Month. Jumping to your. Friday's day, I'm not sure. Anyone?
I have anyone.
I don't know who's there. No one's here, so.
Why don't you talk up a little bit, I couldn't hear you.
I was asking about the Mountain Heart Community Services Proclamation. Is anyone here for that? And I guess not. So my desk come in, and I will do the proclamation link. All right. At this time, I am motion to review the bill.
At this time, I'm going to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that motion.
For a second to read the bills, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes. Assessor's office, tax correction.
Yes. I move to approve the tax correction list in the amount of five hundred seven dollars and ninety-four cents as it has been presented by our assessor.
Second.
Mission for a second to approve the tax correction list. Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bring us down to approval minutes.
At this time, I'm going to approve the minutes for April 16, 2024, and the April 19, 2024 special session.
I will second that motion.
Mission for a second to approve the minutes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes. State settlement.
At this time, I'm going to approve the state settlement list for April 11, 2024, for friend and raised.
I will second that motion.
Mission for a second to approve the state settlement list, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes.
I move to dispense with the readings of the proceedings and vacation and enter them into record in open court session for April 18, 2024 through April 24, 2024.
Second. Mission for a second to dispense with reading. PNOVs and certain on record, Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner. Tell you what, do we have someone from Zoe's Place, the AC? Ah, okay. I'm not exactly sure if that tells the report, but he's going to say.
We're not speaking, but we're here in court, so.
Yeah, Mr. Shea, I'm Mr. Shea today.
Yeah. Yeah, this is all part of our committee, so. The, you know, we do the child abuse out of the little building.
Right.
And we are in the process of forming the 501(c)(3), and that's the name of the new CAC that we are going, so. All right, first of all, I want to start with some child abuse statistics. Before the age of eighteen, one out of every four girls is sexually abused, one out of every six boys is sexually abused. One in five children are sexually sexually well, and then the median age for reported child abuse is nine years old. More than ninety percent of abusers are people, children know, love, and trust. Thirty to forty percent of victims are abused by a family member. Fifty percent are abused by someone outside of the family whom they know and trust. Nearly seventy percent of child sex offenders have between one and nine victims. At least twenty percent have ten to forty victims. An average serial child molester may have as many as four hundred victims in a lifetime. The way a victim's family responds to abuse plays an important role in how the incident affects the victim. Sexually abused children who keep it a secret or who tell or not believe are at a greater risk than the general population for psychological, psychological, emotional, social, and physical problems often lasting into adulthood. More than seventy-five percent of teenage prostitutes have been sexually abused. An estimated forty-two million survivors of childhood sexual abuse exist in America today. So. The opioid crisis brings, amongst other things, higher crime rates, higher criminal cases, and higher child abuse and blood cases. Some people don't think of these things and only focus on substance abuse treatment, which is also needed. However, there are other state and county agencies that are also in need of help. When the old Tiger Valley CAC dissolved here in Preston County, which was a part of, I think it was Preston, Taylor, and Markers at Creighton, if you were part of that. There was still a need to conduct child interviews here in Preston County. For a short time, we were outsourcing those to other counties, but some of the, some of those counties wanted to charge us, which we did not have the funding for that, and it was burdensome for the families and guardians of the minor children to travel to another county. With the old equipment that we still have down here in the little building, a certified interviewer dominating their time, and me as a victim advocate scheduling the interviews, we decided to utilize what we still have here and have been able to conduct interviews. In the past couple of years, with the help of cost of our kids and the prosecutor's office, we have painted the interior of the building and upgraded furnishings, making it brighter and more kid-friendly. However, with us no longer being an accredited CAC, we were no longer eligible for any grant money or other funding. This brings us to today. The equipment that was at our facility is very outdated and almost unusable. What we are now using is an old camcorder and two DVD, two DVD recorders. At the last interview, the camera kept going out of focus and the sound where there basically isn't any sound and is extremely hard for the prosecutor, guardian of items, CPS workers, and police officers to even hear what the child is saying, and we have to have the TV volume all the way up for them to even be able to hear what's happening in the other room. I don't know if you've all been down to there, even though how it's set up.
Yeah, I have.
Okay. So you know how the camcorder is in there, and it's very, it's not ideal, so. I'm proud to say, though, that we have completed some of our paperwork and are hopefully to become a 501(c)(3) by the end of the year. Once that happens, we will be able to have fundraisers and apply for other funding, but we are in dire need of recording equipment now. I have attached a proposal for your review, and it is in fact the lowest cost equipment proposal that we received. The total cost would be eight thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, which includes six thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars for the equipment and eighteen hundred dollars for the file storage. The new equipment can be installed in one day, and it also makes it available to be viewed in another location for a limited amount of time if needed. So they would be able, so we would be able to set like a perimeter, like a timeframe, and like say that someone can't, an attorney can't get here from work in town, or prosecutors like in between hearings, they would be able to watch the interview remotely. Right, they could either watch it as it's happening, or, you know, be able to watch it, view it later, which would be very beneficial for us. You know, that's not what we want to see happen all the time, but, you know, in case that's, that's needed. The viewing room down here is very tiny, and there's sometimes, you know, many parties involved in the case, or their schedule doesn't allow them to travel back and forth to attend the interview in person. So we, the committee of the Zoe's Place Child Advocacy Center Incorporated, come here today and ask that the Preston County Commission please consider covering the cost of the equipment upgrade so that we can continue to conduct child interviews for the child victims of Preston County. Our long-term goal is to become an accredited child advocacy center and be able to expand services such as case management, therapy, supervised visitation here in our own county, because we have to send so many kids out of county, we don't know there's not much here. We do want to thank you for your continued support for allowing us to use the building and to conduct the child abuse for the victims of abuse, abuse and/or neglect, and hope to be able to continue this for the children of our county. Thank you. Oh, you want to say something? Well, I was asked by Jay, I'm, I'm here for Jay Shea, he is on committee, and he asked me to let the commission know, certainly the prosecutor's office has displayed support of this endeavor down here. I would actually add that interview that Stacy was speaking of, you could not hear the child hardly, and it was, it's a real problem. Reporting equipment is vital for that facility, so we certainly, as the prosecutor's office, would support the commission funding that. This is Carrie Boyer, she actually does the interviews, she's a forensic interviewer. Chrissy Bobb and Leah Turner, they're both with kids, so they're all on committee. Jay Shea's on, and he was unable to be here because he had trauma started, and he's supporting the victim review, so.
I just have one question for the proposals here.
Sure.
So there's two separate, so one is onsite, six thousand seven hundred eighty-five, and the second one is for eighteen hundred.
Yeah, that's for the clouds.
Correct. So the total ask is eight thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Now, the cloud storage, is that an annual thing?
Well. If you were able to cover that, like, then we would be, you know, we would be up and running and be able to have funding coming in to be able to cover it after.
Because this is just, it is actually saying it's just an annual license, this one.
Right.
This is for the first year.
Yes. Yeah, and we would, we would be up and running, be able to take care of that after that, if we ever get the 501(c)(3). Yeah, well, that would be.
They'd be able to bring up funding and stuff, yes, cover that roughly two thousand.
Yeah.
Help me out here, where does funding, where revenue comes from for a CAC?
Grant funding, yeah.
There's the overall, so West Virginia can, which is the association of all the CACs, and there's also the federal CACs as well. And on top of that, we can do the dunnashes, we can do the bingo, we can go on contract.
You can actually do, you can do fundraising.
Yes.
Give them some simple rap, or you can raise a few bucks here and there.
Right, which we're planning, like me and Carrie and Jay already began the paperwork, and trust me, once we're ready, we're already ready to do a fundraiser as soon, immediately, as soon as we're able to do that.
All right, we'll take a look at this and see if we, see if we have.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I got a question. What about all that their money from the opioids we got here for his county? Well, can't you use any of that for that stuff?
At this time, no.
Why not?
We still are waiting for guidance from the state, they still are working at the West Virginia First Foundation to make sure. We don't want to use this money because we, the plan they have said is, the money we have, we will then be able to leverage it against some of the state funds to get more money. So if we, if we spend that on this rate this second, that's.
How much did you get in the opioid money?
Right at this moment, five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars.
We're only talking eight thousand dollars.
No, we're talking.
I'm talking, that's what they're asking for, is eight thousand dollars, aren't they?
I know that, but what you're not listening to me say is, that eight thousand dollars, if we hold on to it, we can use that to get another eight thousand dollars from the state.
Don't worry about it, when you get problems now, wouldn't it? You're always looking for the come, you know, you gotta give somebody something to get something back.
We, sir, did we say we're not going to fund it? No, we did not.
No, you did not, but I just asked a question about.
And I tried to explain to you. And I tried to explain to you why we're not doing that.
Okay, if I could elaborate on that, so we could certainly use opioid funding for this. Right now, we have it in a six-month CD because we're trying to figure out what the state's doing. We're trying to be financially responsible.
Watch where our county's going. Yeah, I mean, it all starts here.
Stacy, we, we put this on the agenda for next week.
Yep.
If we do this to next week's agenda, we can take a look and see where would be the best place to pull something like this.
Okay.
I think we are in agreement that this is something that is, is, is much needed, and so let us take a look and find where we would like to pull funding like this from at this time, that would be outside of that opioid, because it is tied up, we take a penalty, we're not interested if we, I took, withdrew from that, but, um, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Is Jay, I don't know if you're here.
I'm here for.
Excuse me.
You want to leave and do that?
Carrie, she said R.R.I.D. The P.O.I.R.
P.
Go ahead.
On employee hire, is that what? Tomorrow, Claire Dehouse will be starting the prosecutor's office, and Mr. Shea asked me to tell the commis, to tell the commission they would, he will submit the page sheets as soon as he gets them done. Hopefully just after then.
Okay.
But we're very excited, um, I hope that most of you are probably familiar with Claire Dehouse, she was a public defender in this county for a very, very long time. She loved here and became assistant prosecutor in Taylor County, and we have, we have coaxed, coaxed her back, and on the right side. But, um, anyway, so, yeah, she's, she will start tomorrow, Mr. Shea will pick you up, and that's.
Angel salary of eighty thousand, second.
I believe so.
Yeah, I think that's.
He did not send that, it's, yes, that's.
All right. Can I approve this? Yeah, at this time, I'm going to approve the hire of Clarity House to the prosecuting attorney's office as an assistant prosecutor at the salary of eighty thousand a year, starting tomorrow.
Yes. I will second that motion.
Motion second to approve this. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that brings us down to open business. Oh, is this Mountain, is Mountain Heart here then?
Sorry, we got.
Well, at this time, if you would, please come up, we have your proclamation and everything. Please.
Do you like, should we read these?
Okay, fair enough.
There's two separate.
There's two separate ones.
Okay. Community Action, 60th Anniversary and Community Action Month Proclamation. Whereas, community action has made essential contributions across the nation for sixty years, inspiring a spirit of hope, creating opportunities for millions of people to be a part of the American dream and providing and improving, improving communities, and whereas, community action remains committed to a nation that creates opportunities for all people to thrive, build strong, resilient communities, and ensures a more equitable society, and whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties, and whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action strategies and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of the individuals, families, and communities and cities, suburbs, and rural areas change. And whereas, community action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, local, and private resources to achieve results for people and communities. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement in ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is recognizing sixty years of innovative impact and providing proven results for Americans. Now, therefore, the Preston County, the Preston County Commission of Preston County, West Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Preston County, West Virginia, community action agencies. I move to proclaim May 2024 as Community Action Month.
For a second to proclaim May, Community Action, was Community Action.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
All right, we have another one. The second proclamation is Provider Appreciation Day. Whereas, Mountain Heart Community Services, Child Care Aware of America, and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas, childcare has provided a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide in this vital force in our economy, and whereas, the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of West Virginia young children, families, and communities. Whereas, childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staffed predominantly by women, continue to recover from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families, and whereas, West Virginia recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by issuing payment for enrollment versus attendance and offering grants and professional development opportunities. Whereas, the future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, the Preston County Commission of Preston County, West Virginia, hereby proclaim May 10, 2024, as Provider Appreciation Day in Preston County, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to recognize child, recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. I move to proclaim May 10, 2024, as Provider Appreciation Day.
For second to declare May 10, Provider Appreciation Day, Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. No, we can just get it done, though we, we, you guys have to leave. I think I was gonna get a picture too.
Had a hard time finding.
Are you like, this way?
This way, which way?
All right. My way. Good?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that.
I got a text message. I received a text message from Felissa just now. I don't think either of them are available. Dan was there, yesterday's coming back this week on Thursday, thirty-nine-two percent. And how that's calculated, I don't know. So if there is a particular message you want me to deliver, I'm more than happy to. Okay.
Yeah, honestly, I think one they told us, we just really just, one dollar.
Yes, they, they closed out August and have moved on.
Correct, there's just that one area that they have.
Works, continue to work in which, for now, on this year.
But it's still, it's still unclear for everything past June.
Right.
That we, is still up in the air.
Would you mean past?
Well, so, the, the, the reports that the auditor's office is going to need are from, the ones from 2022, that the auditor does not have.
Right.
And those are not part of this discussion about completion rights. Yes, and those are needed by the auditor's office, and so just to underscore that, that's still, we don't know. Yes, correct.
That brings down to the county property.
I met last week when the Preston County Fire Association, I've been attending their meetings while we work through something that I would like for you guys to consider, there's a draft. You have this? All right, sure, that's the one you have?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Oh, yes, I did stick it on your front desk, I just held it up. So over past the 911 center, there's a plot of land, and the original master plan, the Preston County Commission worked with the Fire Association years ago, back as long as, I think it's 2010. On the backside, there was some property, really wasn't conducive to their need, and the amount of earthwork that was going to have to be done was a lot to move that project forward, so it just didn't go any further. Didn't embrace the need of the association wanting to be able to train the firemen locally. And so, in, in reviewing the county properties that we have available, I have presented a plot of land. Originally, it looked like a twelve-acre plot, but I had Dewayne Hamilton, our OEM director, revise that and remove out the tower that is located there, because that's really not usable property, and also where the lines come across the land, took that out also, because that's not a usable property, really. So the draft that you have before you is more than the association said that they needed to begin with, but you'll see it expands down and it comes to.
Comes into the.
Comes to where the county property ends there, that would allow them additional terrain training and different things outside of a burn facility, and having enough room to eventually build a classroom-like training facility.
How much acreage do they need for a burn?
Um, they said.
We would need like five, I mean, to have upon the burn building and the facility.
Well, that's right, we do a kind of a drain.
Yeah, we have a catch.
So, so this really does lend to that, so what I'm asking for today is that we approve, looking to lease the property, and what that would look like, and prepare an agreement with, with our attorneys, and that we can present them to the Fire Association to make certain that it conforms to what it needs to be to protect the county and also the Fire Association. And so I'm just asking for permission to entertain that and move forward.
To make it clear for everyone, the Fire Vins Association is wanting to lease the property from.
Well, that depends on what kind of agreement you guys come up with, because we're at, when it's all said and done, we're going to have close to a million dollars worth of assets setting on that property, and so it depends on how good it's.
Do you have updated quotes on that, Nicole?
Well, no, I think the, the, the burn facility is a little over four hundred thousand, but when you talk about the equipment that we're going to have setting down there, and the building that we're. I mean, it's, it's going to be a substantial, substantial amount of money from that property, so.
Well, if it's like, based on leases we've done in the past with organizations, it basically says, as long as you continue to use it for what it's intended purpose for, you keep it.
Yeah.
But if any time, you don't do anything with it, you know, you just quit using it, then it reverses back up after a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Usually it's five years, it reverses back, if you don't do anything with it for five years, it reverses back.
Well, and then the big concern was because of the expense of everything, the amount of money that we were getting from the state, that new money that we haven't come in yet, and the original quote that we had on burn billing and stuff, kind of had us maxed out financially on getting it with being able to do what we needed to do. financially on getting it with being able to do what we needed to do within your timeframe. So we wouldn't get the law back. But there's worry about if we do need to borrow money to finish this project, to get it done in a timely manner, you know, leasing it from you may be a problem. Where deeding it over may need to be a possibility.
I took some really good notes at the Fire Association with their concerns and what they would like to see the parameters of a lease look like. And so in doing that, I don't know that Jay would have time, but of course I'll reach out to him first. And if there is not time, then looking to work with
So we just want to begin conversations on a lease.
Yes.
There's a lot of variables we're going to have to determine to make these parties happy, but I have no issue with looking at a lease. Is that something you need to take judicial action on?
Not right at the moment until we get a lease.
Is everybody in agreement that I can move forward?
Yeah, here's just a proposal for downs. Thank you, Samantha.
You're welcome. Anyone have any questions?
All right, next item in business is the opioid supplies.
Stick my claim since I pretty much have the rest of it. All right, good people. Happy last Tuesday in April to everyone. Opium settlement advisory board, you should have in your packets before you a current list of the individuals we have previously discussed to serve on the advisory board. There are two positions, however, that remain with questions. Firstly, we have been given no guidance from the sheriff's office as for a representative from their office. So we're still kind of up in the air about whom that might be. Secondly, our DHH rep and really the best person suited, as I called their offices, spoke to them twice last week, to represent DHHR has yet to confirm that he can't do this. So we've got the list of everybody except the sheriff, a representative from the sheriff's office. I tried to volunteer Tanya and that did not go very well. But other than that, I think we have our list for people. And so the question I have now is what kind of guidance, what guidance do I have for you all about moving forward? I mean, do we want to see the people we already have or?
I would say yes. Because if we continue to wait and wait and wait.
Yeah.
It'll never, not order.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion, but I mean, I just, you know, I would be the perfect person. We've been at the E T R for many, many, many years, so.
Okay.
I move to appoint the representatives as they are outlined. Health Department Representative, Dr. Fred Conley. Mont Health Representative, Dr. Lola Burke. Probation Office Representative, Crystal Thomas. Community Corrections Representative, Casey, you want the last name there?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, you're solid.
Coy?
Coy, yes.
Coy. Casey Coy. Board of Education Representative, Liz Tatum. Public at large, Jesse Mayo. Public at large, Paul. With Sheriff Office Representative, Amy. J. J. S. Representative, Grand Department, waiting on confirmation on that. So we shall appoint the ones that we have confirmation on.
Second. Second to appoint these people to be members of the Opium Settlement Divided Order. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
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 Excellent. That will take us to new business where you have two letters before you. And in the new business, it is a request to change in scope for ARPA projects. The first letter from Mr. Glenn LaRue simply requests that due to a donation to the Preston County Youth Center that the Preston County Youth Center received that covered a portion of their paving costs as well as other unmentioned cost-saving efficiencies, PCYC is requesting that their remaining unencumbered ARPA funds to the tune of a little over $66,000 be used for fencing and playground equipment. Given the deadline for this project is the end of October 2024, there should be little concern here in granting this request with respect to preventing the project from being completed on time. Though an additional letter properly stating as such should be provided by Mr. LaRue. Therefore, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve this change in scope for the ARPA project for the Preston County Youth Center by allowing them to use ARPA funds for fencing and playground equipment.
At this time, I move to approve Preston County Youth Center's change in scope for their ARPA request in the amount of $66,482 to be transferred to the use of fencing and playground equipment.
You have a second?
I'll second that motion.
One second to approve this.
I just, I have a little
Okay.
Discussion once we get to that. Okay. So do we have the actual cost of the fence and what the playground equipment will cost?
You have exactly what I have before you.
Okay. Well, I would just like that actual cost on that just because we have another organization, another school system come asking for ARPA funding for playground equipment.
I mean, with the verification, that material that would be given to the county clerk's office before any disbursements would be made.
That's true.
Yeah, so we would have the savers coming here.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's all used and become a small window.
We're reallocating it, we're moving it, transferring this group of work, but they would have to
Yeah, it would be the same procedure that they would do normally to account for. All they're really, unless I'm mistaken here, all they're really asking for is the ability to change in their scope of a program to be able to utilize these funds.
Right.
The material that we would have in terms of cost and everything would be forthcoming for either as a reimbursement or an invoice that
They may not even spend that money.
And they may not, and they may not, sort of stuff. But the change in scope doesn't present any challenge for the completion of the program.
All right.
In a second, to approve this transfer, I mean, change of scope. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
And that takes us to the second letter, which is from the town of Newburgh for the Independence Waterline Extension. Commissioner Stone brought this to our attention during last week's meeting as currently, ARPA funds are to be used solely in the event of a bid overrun once the project is bid out and construction costs are returned. However, the request here, turn the page, is to use the $200,000 in ARPA funds not for bid overrun, but to fully fund the project. Given that the completion date for this project is supposed to be July 30th, 2024, it is paramount at this point that the town of Newburgh be allotted the funds they need to get this project moving. Though, and it must be noted here, an extension will still need to be sought by the town and granted by the commission because they clearly will not have this project completed in the timeline previously established. Therefore, and since we have already discussed this last week, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the change in scope of the ARPA project for the town of Newburgh to allow for the use of ARPA funding to fully fund this project.
So moved.
Second. Motion for a second to approve this change of scope for Commissioner Stone?
Has to. Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yep, makes total sense.
It does.
And thanks to Commissioner Stone for pointing this out and communicating to Sheena Hunt and everyone else at region six. That takes us to a new addition to the agenda. The courthouse reconfiguration project head. Now that the bid has been awarded, we can get down to the business of reconfiguring the courthouse to make room for our state-mandated second judge. For starters, we are holding an internal meeting with the Mills Group, Jarrett Construction, and other vendors to discuss our initial timeline for this project. And either our facility supervisor or myself will have more to say about this timeline during the meeting next, our meeting next week. This is scheduled right now as a team's meeting at 10 o'clock on Friday, so you'll get an update from me via the email and then I'll inform anyone else at the, it's 10 and on this Friday, the fifth, or the third.
The third.
What is this?
The third is this Friday.
The third is this Friday.
Well, this it says April 3rd, that's why I was
Oh, yeah, I mean, May 3rd.
I knew it was May 3rd.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, it's good, it's always good to have people check my dates, sort of stuff, because sometimes I move too quick. So it will be May 3rd, unless the alternate university is April 3rd somewhere else. This, however, will bring us to some sad news. Unfortunately, given our time constraints and a much later-than-anticipated start to the process, we will not be in a position to have all the necessary materials submitted for the courthouse security grant application in time. However, that does not impede our work on the second floor of the courthouse. And what you see before you now is a contract from Montronics for the necessary modifications needed to the camera layout on the second floor of the courthouse to accommodate both the new judge and the new courtroom. You can see on the last page of this proposal, and our friends in the media have this proposal as well, a diagram has been provided on the placement of said cameras, where the new cameras being installed are depicted in green. If there are any remaining questions on this portion of the courthouse project, I can certainly obtain more information or a presentation from Monitronics for the commissioners. If not, though, I humbly request that the commission approve the contract with Monitronics for $9,862.87 for the installation of additional cameras on the second floor of the courthouse and authorize the president to sign. So at this point, I ask the commission for guidance.
I have no issue. Is Monitronics typically who Jarrett works with?
That I do not know. We'll find that out on Friday, May 3rd, not April 3rd.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, even if they're numbskull.
I know, I know.
They're, yeah, for everything else.
Well, and they do all our other cameras.
Right.
So we have unified everything as we did last week where we got all the monitoring and everything all through a single company.
We don't want to ease them.
I move to approve the contract, assistance modification authorization between the Preston County Commission and Monitronics International Incorporated in the amount of $9,862.87 and authorize the president to sign that contract.
Approve and authorize the president to sign Monitronics. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes me to the first item under my report, which is two letters from the Arthurdale Heritage Incorporated requesting further funding and further funding for their arts and heritage program in the amount, total amount of 20K. The first letter was dated at the end of February 2024, right before our budget proceedings. We discussed possibly taking the donation out of our hotel motel arts and humanities contribution, but we never actually took action to do so. Arthurdale Heritage has then requested an additional contribution of $10,000, again for cultural heritage humanities and arts programming, like providing free museum tours to Preston County K through 12 students and to purchase supplies for events like sheet cheering and wool dyeing. I have spoken with our bookkeeper on this matter and have included a printout from PACE showing that this line item currently has $25,905 that frankly, we would need to capture for next fiscal year's budget if we didn't spend this year. There really is no downside here is we cannot really spend said funding on anything other than exactly the kind of programmatic activities Arthurdale Heritage is providing. Therefore, I humbly request that the commission approve the request for a $20,000 contribution to Arthurdale Heritage Incorporated for Arts and Humanities Programming and authorize the president to properly sign the included voucher for this contribution.
Okay, so this is a request for this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
It is actually a request simply for this fiscal year. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we do have other nonprofits in our county that do few things that fall under this criteria, like the Sologic Center in Grovesburg.
We do, but here's, we give money to them too, but at this time, this is a request we got.
And they're still actually, approving those would leave in there $5,905.
Six, seven bucks.
And we still have money to the tune of a grand total of about $9,000 in contribution lines and other line items anyway, so we have that as well.
Yeah.
One thing that is intriguing about the Arthurdale Heritage Group is that they are constantly seeking dollars and successfully going after funding.
That is true. They don't just ask, they go out ready and it
And report, give us updates.
Just now, I have a motion for this request.
At this time, I will make a motion to fund both requests for Arthurdale Heritage from this current fiscal year budget in the amount of $20,000 out of Arts and Humanities.
Second. Motion for a second to approve this request for the heritage. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Has anyone heard anything about their trade school, their historic preservation?
No, other than when I spoke with them this past week, it is, everything's moving along and they're getting ready with, there's a childcare facility in one of the old buildings there that they're also working on.
They were actually waiting, they had sent a request into the Senator's office and they secured a lot of money specifically, that's what they were trying to do instead of waiting on.
Well, that leads us to our other facilities update, and this will be very brief. Just a brief update here. The animal shelter, the Downspot project is nearly completed and will be completed this week. The new waterline installation is also complete. So that checks off two boxes from the animal shelter. The sheriff's office, right now, we're just waiting on desks. And the front entryway is sort of a rainy day project that we have Cecil, one of our maintenance workers, working on when time allows.
Which is not part of the flood.
No, which is not part of the flood, but it's something we're able to do. And just to remind, that was one that we were initially given a change order from Pan Animal in tune of about $19,000 that we were going to do in-house for a fraction of that if not even remotely close. Yeah, that's taking care of. So we're waiting on desks. We should have more of the update on that next week as work continues on the entryway. That takes us to the last item, which is a budget revision. So to close my report, we have a budget revision to cover the cost of three office chairs in the commission office. We had two office chairs that were well past their prime and our third chair just up and broke. Necessitating the need for new chairs. We were able to get three chairs at a discounted rate, which we are very thrilled to be able to do that. And while we have enough in our materials and supplies budget to cover the cost of the chairs, I am requesting this budget revision to make sure we have sufficient funds in this line item in case anything else were to happen before the end of the fiscal year. Now, any money we wouldn't spend out of this increase would obviously just roll over into carryover anyway, and so it would be recaptured. So it's more of a preventative nature since it takes, the process is we do the budget revision and then that money is allowed for the next week. This will just build in a safety net for us for the months of May and June, just to make sure that we are covered. And so at this point, I request the commission make a motion to approve the aforementioned budget revision for $1,079 being taken out of contingencies and moved into our county commission materials and supplies fund as presented. And members of the media should also have a copy of that budget revision as well.
Second.
Second.
Motion for a second to approve this budget revision. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
And that concludes the report.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have a couple things before we move on.
You want to go and do that?
Comments or do you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay. At this time, at this time, I move to go into an executive session concerning a potential legal matter.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time.
Two things.
At this time, I move to go into an executive session concerning a potential legal matter.
Second. Motion for a second to adjourn to executive session for a potential legal matter. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, any other questions?
I do have a couple things before we move.